Can the please call the roll?
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Davidson.
Here.
Counselor Lemey.
Here.
Counselor Andrews.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor One.
Here.
Mayor Ripma.
Here.
All right, is there an agenda update?
No, it's the agenda as written, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Well, we'll start off with agenda item number two, which is public comment. It's public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items, which is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of counsel. So I'll open it up to public comment. Let's start with people on Zoom. Anyone care to address the Troutdale Council?
Mayor Ripma, Paul Littlecox, Troudale.
Yes, Paul, go ahead.
Okay, got my usual prepared statements here. Since the selection committee will be meeting soon, and I'm not sure a public comment opportunity will be provided, I want to comment on the process in advance. It's been a city practice to automatically reappoint any incumbent who reapplied. I've been involved with various committees over several years and closely follow the others. My observation has been that some members, whether long-term or up for their first renewal, do not participate at a discernible level and are simply taking up space. There's way too little turnover preventing new members from bringing fresh perspectives to the table. If word on the street is that the incumbents are just going to be reappointed anyway, potential new members could easily be discouraged from applying. Even those who are doing an outstanding job shouldn't expect these to be lifetime appointments like the U.S. Supreme Court. At one point, there were three planning commission members with 20-plus years. There's also the issue of the same individuals serving on multiple committees. We saw one downside of this after the last election, where several vacancies were created when committee members were elected or appointed to counsel. If there aren't enough applicants to fill all the various positions with different individuals, perhaps the committee sizes should be reduced. That has been done with HLC in the past. I mean, the same people in multiple positions also perpetuates the situation of fewer openings for new individuals. There should be a limit of no more than two committees per person. TCAB is a special case because one half of its membership is drawn from other committees. There's a risk of it getting too heavily weighted in one direction if whoever represented by any of those other committees. For example, at one point, four members of planning commission were also on TCAB. In closing, I'd remind the selection committee that the appointments are a committee decision, not a rubber stamp approval of each individual committee chairperson's personal preference. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul. Anyone else online wish, who wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, how about in our chambers here? Any member of the public wish to address the council on a non-agenda or consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to item number three, consent agenda. Jesse, you're, you vote first. So I'm going to invite you to...
Yeah, read the consent agenda.
Yeah, please.
So 3.1 minutes, February 25th, 2025, City Council regular meeting. 3.2 minutes, March 11th, 2025, City Council regular meeting. 3.3 minutes, March 18th, 2025, City Council work session. 3.4 minutes, April 1st, 2025, City Council work session. 3.5 minutes, April 8th, 2025, City Council regular meeting.
And I invite a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt.
Second. All right, please call the roll.
Counselor Davidson.
Yeah.
Counselor Lemey.
Yes.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Ripma.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda is adopted. Move on to agenda item number four, which is a proclamation. It's a proclamation announcing National Public Works Week, which is May 18th through 24th, 2025. Slogan: People, Purpose, Presence. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Troutdale. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, operators, and highly skilled staff at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Troutdale to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their community. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, David Ripma, Mayor of the City of Troutdale, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in Troutdale. And I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to recognize our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and staff, and the vital contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, dated this 13th day of May 2025. Thank you. And thanks to our public works department.
I got one here.
And all the staff. We'll move on to agenda item number five, which is a report from the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office. Captain Rob Stewart, and welcome, Sheriff. Welcome.
All right, good evening, Mayor Ripma and members of the City Council. I'm Nicole Morrissey O'Donnell, Multnomah County Sheriff. Joining me for tonight's presentation is Captain Rob Stewart, your assigned Chief of Police for the City of Troutdale. We also have in attendance Chief Deputy Kerry Care, who oversees all of our law enforcement division operations, as well as our Business Services Director, Chief John Harms-Mellant. The Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, as you all know, and I've talked to several of you about how much we value our service to the Troutdale community, and we're happy to share the great work of the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office in your community throughout this Public Safety Services annual report. Next slide. At the Sheriff's Office, along with our vision for a safe and thriving community for everyone, it is our mission to support all community members through exemplary public safety service. Our partnership with the City of Troutdale is strong, and we share the same commitments. As an example, your Department of Community Development's mission of fostering community visions, developing opportunities, and maintaining safe environments for the betterment of Troutdale, I believe, also includes the services that we provide in this city. By prioritizing safe neighborhoods and schools, fostering community partnerships and growth, and developing innovative public safety strategies, including adding new technology to accomplish our collective goals. Next slide. So tonight, our agenda will cover a brief overview of our contract, data related to calendar year 2024. It will highlight our positive community engagement, and we'll also share new public safety initiatives moving forward. Next slide. To recap, the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office began policing services with this contract in the City of Troutdale in 2015. This contract, at its core, focused on patrol, investigations, administrative support, as well as a community resource deputy that was added in 2020. Over the last 10 years, we have been extremely proud to serve this city, and we feel highly connected to those that we serve. We believe that Troutdale is our community also. As the years have passed, previous City of Troutdale police officers that transferred to Multnomah County Sheriff's Office through this contract have continued to value where it all began. We have deputy sheriffs who have family connections who still patrol this area, to those in our command staff currently that are leading at the highest levels of this organization, even in the previous years in the role of your chief of police. So our entire team has been dedicated and remains dedicated to the city and all of our communities across Multnomah County. So again, we appreciate being here to share this great work, and I will now turn it over to Captain Rob Stewart to get into the annual report details.
Thanks, Sheriff, and Mayor Counselors, thanks for having us. Captain Robert Stewart, and I'm responsible for leading police services here in Troutdale. It's been my honor to serve the citizens and visitors of Troutdale, working in a collaborative effort towards providing exemplary public safety services. The deputy sheriffs assigned to Troutdale provide 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week comprehensive public safety throughout the city between two patrol departments. These services are conducted through uniform patrol, investigative efforts, civil processes, and community resource programs, as well as with system partner collaborations. If you look at the reporting crime trends that are displayed on the screen there over the last few years, we've seen rates lower overall. All categories have decreased by more than 20%, with the exception of person offenses, which have slightly increased by a little over 5%. This detective caseload summary shows outlines the detective case activity in 2024. As you can see, we entered 2024 with 99 open cases, gaining 154 new cases between January 1st and December 31st of 2024. Of those cases, we closed 155 between those same year dates, and we ended the year leaving 93 cases open. Included in this caseload are some of the most major crimes we see in our society. Within the volume of cases shown here for our detectives, we are seeing the top three types of new cases in 2024 as DHS child abuse case referral, assault, and weapons offenses. Our top three types of closed cases in 2024 were DHS child abuse case referral, assault, and child abuse. So this slide provides some data related to our calls for service. We've included in this format to show the volume of calls and various types of incidents we're dispatched to. As you can see, there's been a marked reduction in reported stolen vehicles, theft, and burglary, with an increase in reported assaults, suicide attempts, threats, and traffic accidents, which I'll speak more to on the next slide. As reflected on this slide, dispatch calls for service have remained steady, with a noted reduction in self-initiated activity. You can see at the bottom, the time spent on calls for emergency and non-emergency services have both increased. As we touched on the previous slide, we've seen an increase in certain types of calls for service which require more time to resolve. We use this type of data to make informed decisions about our operations, such as advising our district deputies of trends during roll call, as well as in the development of public safety strategies, particularly when and where to hold public safety missions and the types of crime or calls we're focused on addressing. We know that supporting traffic safety and addressing traffic issues is a priority for the City of Troutdale, and we've employed various strategies to focus our efforts on traffic safety concerns. One example is the use of a ghost car parked at various locations to provide a visible reminder to drivers if they approach high-traffic areas or pedestrian crossings. This is in coordination with speed radar trailer deployment and focused traffic safety missions within the city, which we have conducted four of over the last few months. We believe in using traffic stops as educational opportunities to enhance overall traffic safety. Every person we contact is unique, with individual life experiences and situations. We take several factors into consideration when citing the best outcome of a stop for both the individual contacted, as well as the general public, which can vary between warnings, citations, or arrests under egregious circumstances. The Sheriff's Office Record Unit manages the processes of high volume of work. Troutdale's specific reports account for approximately 22% of this work. These records break out into areas related to citations, restraining orders, and warrants, as reflected in this slide. The Logistics and Evidence Unit provides support for operational readiness and equipment needs, as well as evidence custody and documentation for our divisions. Although thousands of pieces of evidence are logged each year, they are also closely tracked for the right return to rightful owners, destroyed, or transferred to another Deputy Nick Boar is your dedicated community resource deputy for the City of Troutdale. Deputy Boar makes personal connections with community members and businesses within the city, working together towards solutions to the issues in our area. Deputy Boar regularly attends meetings with the city, as well as attends community engagement events such as First Friday, Movies in the Park, Trunk or Treat, and the Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony. This position role is dedicated to the City of Troutdale, allowing for a focus on larger or longer-scale problems and projects within the city. I'd like to highlight one recent example. Last month, Deputy Boar began working to abate a nuisance property, which was being utilized for criminal activity. This investigation began when Deputy Boar was addressing traffic safety concerns on Troutdale Road and stopped a motorcycle from speeding. Deputy Boar suspected the motorcycle may have been stolen and seized it, later confirming that it was stolen and connected to a nearby residence. Deputy Boar summoned additional investigative resources and obtained a search warrant for the residence, where he discovered numerous motorcycles and motorcycle parts, some of which had already been reported stolen, and were able to be recovered for return to their rightful owners. During the search warrant, neighbors were on their rooftops observing the warrant service and cheering as it was executed. Deputy Boar was also discovered some concerning information about the suspect's father, who was living at the residence, and coordinated with adult protective services to help the father in seeking eviction of the suspect from the property. I highlight this case as one of the most recent examples of the positive impact your community resource deputy provides on a regular basis. In this slide, details Deputy Boar's activity in 2024. As you can see from the data in the slide, Deputy Boar prioritizes traffic safety and visibility issues within the City of Troutdale. Our additional summer detail at Glen Dollar Park has been a value success for safety awareness and defusing lower levels of conflict before turning into an emergency, as well as providing numerous community engagement opportunities. This detail collaborates with American Medical Response, who is stationed in the park, to provide overall public safety services to community members. The detail provides an overall safety presence through ATV, vehicle, and foot patrol throughout the park and along the river. As you can see from the slide, over the summer detailed three-month period, 340 hours were logged at the park, with 71 self-initiated and dispatch calls for service. MTSO values near-term relationships and opportunities to engage with our community members during special events. We look forward to them and enjoy participating in these types of events as they are cornerstone, excuse me, a cornerstone of our community policing model. Being able to connect with our community in a positive way helps build and maintain community trust between law enforcement and the people they serve. This slide outlines the great work done by our dedicated school resource deputies assigned to the Reynolds High School District. I'd like to highlight the number of classes taught, as well as the mentoring contacts our school resources, our school resource deputies conducted during the students' last year. This work is specifically crucial towards building positive contacts with law enforcement during the students' formative years. These deputies respond not only to Reynolds High School, but also to the middle and grade schools within the district, and they're available or respond for calls of service within the community. The Homeless Outreach and Programs Engagement Team, or HOPE Team, has a critical connection to homeless populations in our cities and unincorporated Multnomah County. The HOPE Team connects homeless individuals and families with resources or referrals need for housing, drug addiction, or necessities such as water or clothing. The HOPE Team makes connections with our homeless population to create an environment of trust and respect that aids in sharing information about those who may be in need. In Troutdale alone, this has included over 100 contracts, 100 contacts with individuals in need. We've referred 46 people to services and cleaned up 24 unsanctioned camping areas with five direct placements in shelter or housing. As was previously discussed, we use calls for service data to inform public safety strategies, particularly when we are identifying when and where to hold public safety missions, as well as what type of crime or call we're focused on addressing. We've held high visibility enforcement missions related to DUII, street racing, stolen vehicles, theft, and human trafficking, many of these in collaboration with other public safety partners. A few examples include a recent focused DUII enforcement mission with the Oregon State Police and the Portland Police Traffic Unit, as well as a coordinated response with local public safety partners to address coordinated street racing events in the area, which was able to head off a street takeover attempt in the City of Troutdale. These missions not only result in an overall increase in public safety, but also result in the recovery of stolen property and seized weapons. This work acknowledges that effective partnerships between law enforcement and community stakeholders are essential to public safety, and it is vital to recognize that the public safety is a shared responsibility. Thanks for that opportunity to report to you guys, and I'll enter back to you here.
Thank you, Captain Stewart. Thank you for the slide. So we look forward to continuing our partnership with the City of Troutdale to provide our professional and high-quality public safety services. As we move through the next steps to finalize our contract together, I would like to share with you some of the areas that we're working on to enhance our operations in 2025. A couple of those are the introduction of drone technology, and they are up and running now. We will be implementing body-worn cameras. The continued expansion of our enhanced public safety initiatives, which you heard a little bit about through this presentation, focusing on gun violence, stolen vehicles, dangerous driving, and traffic safety, as well as retail theft, just to name a few. And I think what's so important about when we're able to participate and gain other agencies to come out here and work alongside us, not only are we doing enhanced public safety missions within our own organization, we are also able to coordinate with OSP, with Portland Police Bureau, with Gresham Police. Portland comes out here and helps us as well, especially with the DUI mission. I was out here in this room, and I was so proud to see all of the agencies coming out here to participate in this very important mission to ensure that we were saving lives that night. That isn't something that always used to happen with garnering that kind of support and helping in East County and across all of our communities that we serve. So I'm really proud that we have been able to foster those partnerships and those collaborations. That always makes all of our organizations stronger as we navigate some of the most challenging public safety issues that all of our communities are facing. So as Sheriff, and as we continue our partnership, I remain committed to the safety of our Troutdale community, and I do support your pursuit of an independent city police department if that continues to remain the desire. But until then, I want you to know that you can count on me, you can count on our entire office, and the proud men and women that work in this organization that serve these communities each and every day. They show up every day to do their best work, often risking their personal safety for the safety of all of us, and they are dedicated to providing exceptional police services day in and day out. Next slide, please. So with that, we would like to thank you for your time tonight, but I would also like to invite Chief Deputy Kerry Care, again, who oversees our entire law enforcement operation, as well as Chief Harms-Mellant, to join us for any questions that you may have.
We should pull up a couple of chairs.
Well, thank you. Thank you for everything and for all that you do, and thank you, Sheriff and Captain Stewart and the rest of your team for your dedication. We, we appreciate it, we know, and we, we've had some meetings these last couple of months, but we, I can't tell you how much we appreciate your, your working with us in Troutdale, and we think we're, we're there as far as continuing relationship, at least for a while. And we, anyway, we can't thank you enough for everything you've done. I don't know if you gentlemen, John or Kerry, want to say a few words? If you have a presentation, or otherwise, I'll turn it over to questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for allowing us to be here today, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have, just for the entire council. Those of you who may not know me, I used to be a City of Troutdale police officer until 2015, so I do have historical knowledge of what Troutdale used to be.
Great.
They haven't given me a uniform. I've been bobbying. I'm John Harms-Mellant, I'm the Business Services Chief. Nothing prepared, but if you have questions, happy to answer them.
All right, well, any questions from the council?
I'll take one. I know, I know you guys have a difficult job. I wouldn't want to do it myself. I learned that at the night, at the Wood Village event where the sheriff was involved in, so I had kind of the scenario thing, so it's a lot of pressure, and I get it. You know, I know it's just a request, I know that you guys have higher priorities, but every summer along the river, we have a lot of people that are camping and parking rigs along there, and my concern isn't so much them doing that, it's what happens to the people that are trying to make it to the river. They're having to walk or bicycling, so they're having to go between a parked vehicle, and now they're out on the road. And I know the cyclist community complained a lot when they did the guardrail, which gave them a little way out, but when cars are parked there, if there's anything you guys could do at all to watch out for that this summer, that'd be my only request.
Absolutely. We can have the community resource deputy focus on that area.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, I did want to say, I just, I really appreciate the community resource officer. I think it's gone a long way for the community as a whole and spilling those connections, and obviously, some of the recent results kind of speak for themselves as far as a lot of the labor that's been laid down and kind of knowing the cities and the now, so I appreciate that big time. I would say, just passing along some feedback I've gotten from community members. When it comes to patrols, I imagine you guys have a pretty set layout, but I have heard comments of folks like not really seeing too much in way of activity or feeling as safe in certain neighborhoods versus just kind of some of the major roadways, so just wanted to kind of pass that along to you guys, and maybe, you know, see where you can tweak things here and there. Obviously, you guys know best, given your resources, but it would go a long way, I think, just to help the community feel safer, just to kind of maybe see more throughout the neighborhoods every once in a while, a little bit more frequently, so. But yeah, I really appreciate you guys big time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anything? How about Jeffrey, or Jesse, or John?
If I can say, Mr. Mayor, that I've gotten to meet you all, I hadn't known you before. Over the last few months in meetings, we've had you all very professional, very well-meaning, very good-hearted, and it's been a pleasure to work with you, and I know we're going to have this agreement continued here for the next few years, and we'll see how it goes from there, but it really is a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
And I would certainly echo that, too. I've been in most of the meetings, and you're great. Well, I think I, traditionally, we open our agenda items to public comment. We're not actually voting on anything tonight, but let me, let me see if there is any public comment out in Zoom. Anybody wish to address a question to the Sheriff? If not, I'll move on to anybody in the room. All right, well, hey, really appreciate your coming, and appreciate what you do, and I guess I could go on and on, but I'll stop there and say thank you. I guess I could go on and on, but I'll stop there and say thank you, thank you very much, and we're, we're about to sign on, really, we are. We, we, I don't know exactly the schedule, but we're, we're, we're ready to keep going. And thank you for your latest version, really, it's very much appreciated, so, unless you have something else, we'll let you go.
Thank you, thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you, thank you so much for coming.
Thanks. Thank you, John.
I mean, Captain Stewart, I knew you were gonna come, but I didn't know the rest of it.
We brought the whole team in.
But I appreciate all of you. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is a public hearing ordinance introduction, adopting text amendments to Chapter 14. Dakota, you're on.
Thank you very much, Mayor Rittman. Good evening, councilors. I'll pull up my presentation really quickly here. All righty. My name's Dakota Meyer, I'm the Associate Planner here with the City of Troutdale. I will be presenting the staff report for proposed text amendment to Chapter 14 of the Troutdale Development Code under case file number 75-18. There is one primary request served by this application. The request is initiated by the city, and the city is the overall applicant. We are proposing to update Section 14.035.D submittal requirements of the floodplain section, Chapter 14 of Development Code, to add habitat assessment report to all floodplain development permits as a requirement. This changes in response to FEMA's requirement for communities to select pre-implementation compliance measures, otherwise known as PICMs. Here's just a quick overview of the proposed amendment. It will be within Chapter 14, which is flood, our flood management chapter of the Troutdale Development Code, specifically Section 14.035 floodplain development permit subsection D, which is submittal requirements. We are proposing to add floodplain habitat assessment report as a submittal requirement for all floodplain development permits. Here is a quick background, I'll read through this, of how we got to this point. So in April 2016, the National Marine Fishery Service issued a biological opinion that concludes that the National Flood Insurance Program in Oregon could jeopardize the survival of several threatened marine species. In October 21, 2021, FEMA issued a draft implementation plan on how to reduce the negative impacts of the NIF, NIF, on threatened species. In 2023, several environmental groups filed a lawsuit stating FEMA has been slow to implement the biological opinion. In July 2024, FEMA announced a new program for, of pre-implementation compliance measures, or PICMs, for the biological opinion. FEMA notified Oregon NFIP communities of the requirement to adopt a mandatory PICMs in order to remain part of the NFIP. So here, the, here's a overview of what the PICMs are. There are, there are three options. City staff has spent much time deliberating, so I'll run through them really quickly. Communities required to select one of the three pathways to meet the new PICM requirement. The first option was to prohibit all development in the special flood hazard area. Second option is to adopt the 2024 model ordinance that requires mitigation of any floodplain development to be at a no net loss standard. And number three, option number three, required a special habitat assessment report and mitigation plan for development on a permit-by-permit basis for special, special flood hazard area to achieve a no net loss standard. City staff attended several webinars hosted by FEMA between the months of July 2024 and November 2024. FEMA set a deadline of December 1st, 2024, for communities to decide which option they would choose. Staff discussed the three options in length and chose to move forward with option three. To give a little bit of background of why we chose to do option three is the city, we currently already have a floodplain development permit, so we already had, we already look at developments within the flood hazard area on a permit-by-permit basis. Any development, they have a, they have one permit, they always have to get a flood hazard permit. So the easiest route option, the easiest route and the best option for the city was to move forward with adding a habitat assessment report to the requirements for a flood hazard permit, or flood development permit. Here's just the depiction of the proposed changes to Section 14.035.D for submission requirements. We will be adding flood hazard assessment report under the submittal requirements for a floodplain development permit to ensure all development within a 100-year floodplain will comply with the 2016 National Marine Fishery Service Biological Opinion of No Net Loss Standards. The proposed findings, staff find that findings A through E have all been met, that the proposed change to the Development Code does not conflict with the applicable comprehensive land use plan goals or policies, the proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals, the proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code, public need is best satisfied by a particular change, and the change will not adversely affect the health, safety, welfare of the community. The procedure for this, for this amendment, it's a Type IV code amendment, Planning Commission Recommendation to Council. City Council is the decision-making body. Staff offered the following recommendation to, for the conduct of this meeting on, my dates are a little off, but I believe it was February 12th, we went to Planning Commission, and they recommended approval, or recommended, yeah, recommended approval to City Council. So the next several here, so tonight is the initiation, or introduction, sorry, for this amendment. The next meeting will be May 27th for adoption, and free to take any questions that you may have, that's all I have for you.
Well, I have one. Is there proposed development in these floodplains?
So, yes, so the city, if you look at our floodplain map, we have several properties that fall within floodplain, and so if we were to choose option, option one, which is absolutely no development within floodplain, that's anything from a structure or any sort of structure, whether it's commercial or residential, all the way down to even a shed that you want to put in your backyard. Say you live down Jackson, Jackson Park, a lot of those properties have floodplain, and so that means you couldn't do any sort of development. Currently, you have to go through the process of submitting a floodplain development permit, have to receive approval before any sort of development, but since we do have, so we have Beaver Creek, Columbia River, and Sandy River, all within our city, it just didn't seem like the best option because we'd really be restricting a lot of potential developable land if we were to not allow any sort of development within floodplain.
And I guess, follow-up from me, anyway, this flood habitat assessment report from a qualified expert, are those, is that doable?
It is doable. I will say FEMA didn't have a whole lot of great feedback. That's a question that not just Troutdale had, but several jurisdictions. The first meeting that we were in, the first webinar, was with members from every jurisdiction in the state, and that question came up a lot. And so I think really what it comes down to is taking away what FEMA said, is we would like to see that from a floodplain specialist. FEMA's was a little more lax than that, but it has to be a qualified professional that some, that puts together the document and submits it with your floodplain development permit.
I guess one last thing, it just occurs to me, that with the, it seems like FEMA as an agency is under a cloud, shall we say, of possible downsizing or, or something along those lines, and I just wondered if you know anything about its future, this part of FEMA where it's requiring local jurisdictions to enforce no net loss of floodplain habitat and that sort of thing, is that, anything like that being discontinued?
We have not heard anything. We are aware that there's a lot of uncertainty with FEMA as a whole right now, currently with the current, current state of politics. We have not heard anything, we have not, it's gone almost radio silent from them. There's other requirements that we have to do as a city, so we're kind of just waiting to hear if we have to continue, if we have to continue moving forward, but as of right now, we're moving forward with the requirement, and the reason being is there was a lot of discussion of whether or not this community should move forward with this, is there any teeth to this from FEMA? But really, the big thing is that we are part of that National Flood Insurance Program, and since we do have several properties, homes that fall, that need that, it lowers the insurance rates for citizens within the city, we think it's, we thought it's best practice to move forward with this, just to make sure that we remain a part of that program for our community. If things change, it's a very simple change, given that we do already have a floodplain development permit, other communities don't, so they're struggling more than I would say we are. So it was just something to keep our community protected where we can, it was the best to move forward with this. If things change, we can change it later, but it's, we just wanted to move forward to make sure we had that blanket, and it didn't get pulled out from under us.
All right, well, thank you, Dakota, that's a good explanation, and I went ahead and asked because I figured there's gotta be other people out there wondering the same thing, so let me open it up to the council. Anybody wish to ask questions about this? We will be having a public hearing, but now's our chance to ask. John, Zach?
When I was on Planning Commission, I think that was my last meeting for MIR, and I asked pretty much all the same questions, so I appreciate you guys' ability to, almost uncanny ability to choose the option that's going to impact community the least in terms of harm or extra work done, and still satisfy the requirement, so definitely appreciate that move, especially considering it sounds like FEMA still doesn't have anything together with their model ordinance that they originally proposed, so appreciate that big time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Glenn?
Yeah, feel free to chime in on this one.
Yeah, in case I say something wrong.
I never heard who was actually suing FEMA. Just a case of government suing government, or, okay.
It was, from what I understand from some of the research I'd done, is it was several different environmental rights groups. So there's a long list of them, they all kind of came together. There was a smaller list that sued them the first time, and then a much longer list the second time.
What kind of cost would be involved with, to do, to do this habitat?
Habitat Assessment Report?
Yeah.
It's tough to say, I think it depends on the scale of the project. So, for example, if you were just building a shed in your backyard and needed a floodplain development permit, small shed, nothing too major, the amount of the footprint, the amount of impact on the floodplain or the habitat of that floodplain will be much smaller, so it's a much easier report to write, I would assume, compared to in our industrial zone, we do have a lot of floodplain from, you know, for channels from the levee and just the 100-year floodplain. If large developments are going into that area, say, you know, 100,000 square foot silts-up concrete building, that report would be much larger because they have to show no net loss along with mitigation, and how they're going to show that on that site they're going to mitigate that properly with trees, shrubs, and that the habitat has not been impacted with this large development, so that could be much more expensive. I don't have any sort of hard numbers on that, but that's how I would look at it, is it really depends on the scale.
So, like, we're doing our riverfront trail currently, right now, we've got, if this was done, like, say, next year, would that have impacted that project?
Yes, yes, it would.
Any idea of what kind of cost?
I'm not sure, but since, considering that that trail's in the floodplain, primarily the full trail, which is a permitted use, and that's why I got the approval for, for our floodplain permit, but that assessment, I mean, I just round, I mean, it could be, you know, tens of thousands, depending, I'm not sure, because, you know, for something like that, a specialist would need to be involved to write the report, given that it is a salmonoid and fish-bearing stream and the things of that nature, so.
You know, the, like, lawns and landscaping are grandfathered and boat ramps, things like that, so if somebody wanted to put a shed on Jackson Park Road, I should pick a different road.
Yeah, just that's the one I can mind, because I know there's a lot of floodplain down there when I do our assessment every year.
And it's, it's part of their grandfathered lawn, it's mowed area. Do you guys have any say on how much they have to do or don't do, or is it just up to the person or the agency that, or the company that's going to be doing these assessments?
I think we still have the requirements of what would, what would trigger a floodplain development permit, so that still gives us a little bit of leeway, because we're not changing those requirements of what triggers, so that would allow the city staff to say, hey, you don't need a floodplain development permit, it doesn't meet that requirement, you're not, it's not hitting that threshold, so therefore, go ahead. But if it does hit any of the, it's not exempt from a floodplain development permit, then they would have to go through the whole permit, which does require, will now require the assessment.
You know, and I meant to say this at the beginning of this, and I forgot, but I did want to declare potential conflict of interest, because I own two properties that are in floodplain, and I've been told in the past that, you know, two of our borders of our town are bordered by water, so it's kind of, there's probably a lot of people in that same situation, but just wanted to get it on the record. And then one other thing, let's see, it's on page, Chapter 14, page six, item C, it's talking about the base float elevation, and the, the last sentence on there talks about two feet above grade.
Mm-hmm.
And that one kind of stuck in my craw, because the requirement from FEMA is only one foot, and it's back when we did have actually a floodplain experiment, is his name Ryan, is that, do you remember? Yeah, he was kind of really pushing to increase that, and I, you know, now that it's going to cost even more money to do development, I would request that we, unless you guys have a sound argument why we shouldn't, to make it what the FEMA requirement is, which is one foot, it would help offset some of these new costs happening. I don't know if we'd have to get a consensus of council for that, to change it, or, Mayor, how would, how would you suggest?
Well, this, the, actually...
The ordinance was published with a certain text amendment, that's not one of them.
Right, that, that isn't part of the amendment, and that, the two-foot is, says that it may result in higher insurance rates. The rest of it talks about a reasonable height, reasonable elevation, and floodway data has to be involved. That, that two-foot is the FEMA insurance rate setting function, the city has no control over that. That is something that FEMA flood insurance deals with, so.
So that insurance program that the city's a part of, that, it's, it's an elective program, not every city needs to, but it does bring insurance rates down for properties that are in, so that's why that is a slightly higher number than their base, like, you know, if you're constructing FEMA's is one foot, but if you want to, in order for the, to receive the lower rates and the better rates on flood insurance through FEMA, the two feet, that's why it states that.
Kind of like a safe harbor, in other words, if you do two feet, you say it may not result in higher insurance.
Some of that's a requirement, then if you... Some of that's a requirement, then if you could do the minimal pricing.
Correct, yeah.
You might get a higher rate.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, exactly, correct.
Okay, sounds good. It looks pretty good. I can see what it passed. I wish I had more information on potential costs, the image panel, if you can't provide that.
Yeah, and that's, that was, that's been a big question that multiple municipalities and communities have asked of FEMA. Without saying too much, it sounds that this was a little bit rushed by FEMA. And they, there's a lot of things that they were having trouble answering. So that, that's one question that has been asked multiple times. And really, what we've gotten is similar to what I said, is it's hard to put a price on it. It depends on who's preparing the report and so on.
It just seems like it's never enough. You never get a rest. It gets, it gets very frustrating as a property owner. I don't blame you guys. And this was actually one of the more easy ones to swallow, I guess.
Try to make it easy.
I appreciate that.
All right. Our councilors online, Jeffrey or John. Jesse, do you have any questions?
Nothing for me.
All right. Well, with that, I think what I'll do then is open a public hearing, which, this will be a public hearing on this, just introducing the ordinance change. It is essentially adding a subsection of, I don't know, C-12 to Troutdale Development Code 14 dot O3 five. That's the change we're proposing to vote on. That would not occur till the next meeting, but I invite public comment. This is a public hearing, and I invite public comment at this time. Let's start with online. Anybody? Paul, I think you're the one. Seeing nothing. Anyone in the chamber and seeing not too much public, but wait, public comment. It's time.
Hey, Diane Castillo White, Troutdale, Oregon. And the only question I have is, I know that I've been following this issue since I'm on water for many, many years. And the only question I would have is what somebody like Dave Honeycutt, who is a representative of Oregon property owners in litigation, in courts and agencies throughout Oregon, people like that, it just would be interesting to see some things that we may not see what the cause and effect is right now. Nowhere alluding to cost to determine, to do certain actions. But anyway, I just think, I've talked to Mr. Honeycutt in the past, and he's very helpful and he's very knowledgeable. He's excellent at what he does. So I just think it'd be interesting to hear from people that represent citizenry and, again, what the effects possibly would be, because there might be some things that we don't, he might be able to predict or realize more than what, what, what we can. So that, that would be my comment. Thank you.
All right. I, if I recognize the name Dave Honeycutt as a kind of property where it's kind, I can, I can be, you can be sure he knows this is happening. And if he had comments, he, we'd have heard them at Planning Commission or here. But anyway, good point. Anybody else in council? Seeing none, I will close the pub, the public hearing.
Paul, one last question.
Yeah, yeah, we can go back and still, we're, we're not adopting this tonight, so. Any more questions from council? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just thought, I really liked what you guys did with the C-FED rules by delaying its implementation. Is there any time in doing the same thing on this one?
Unfortunately, no. So I gotta mention, it was a bit rushed by FEMA. So we were notified in July, and then the final, a lot of it was rolled out very slowly. So we had, and we had our last meeting with FEMA in November of 2024, with a deadline to select by December 1st of 2024. And then with that saying, if we did not mention, say, which option we wanted to go with, then as of January 1st of 2025, all communities automatically revert to a permit-by-permit basis until they adopt one of the three in their code. So that was a question, too, because, for example, some cities, some communities are, they want to adopt the model ordinance. And having a month given, we got, we received the model ordinance about a month prior to the decision date of when cities had to. As you all know, it takes a lot longer than a month to get, to do a code amendment. And they asked for extensions, and the answer was, no, if that's your, if that's the route you want to go, you'll have to do permit-by-permit until you get it adopted.
Anyone else? Any other questions from council? All right. We will consider adoption at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item number seven, it's another public hearing. Ordinance introduction and ordinance amending the Troutdale Municipal Code Title III, Revenue and Finance and Establishing, oh, wait, I'm reading the wrong one. An ordinance approving the Fourth Amendment to the Troutdale Riverfront Renewal Plan to Extend the Plan Duration. Eric.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Yes, I mentioned this briefly to you during the Budget Committee meetings last month, that we were coming up on the anniversary, as it were, and that I would need to be bringing a, an extension for you. So as I had, excuse me, outlined in the staff report, we have amended the Troutdale Riverfront Renewal Plan three different times previously over the past 20 years. Just for context, the, the plan is what governs development in the, oh, is this my, my camera here? It is, is what, is what governs the, the plan, or, excuse me, governs the development within the urban area. The Urban Renewal Agency as a separate entity and was created by the council back in 2006, was charged with implementing the plan. The plan specifies the kind of the broad framework and parameters. There's a number of requirements for the creation and adoption of the plan and so forth, but one of the items in it is what's referred to as duration. The original plan was adopted with a 10-year duration. The duration refers to the, the deadline by which the debt that can be repaid by the tax increment has to be incurred by. And so back 10 years ago, we had been coming up close to that, and that was one of the previous amendments that was done at that point in time. The, there was a couple of other housekeeping and, and other adjustments that were done at that time as well, but the duration was extended from 10 years to 20 years. We are now coming up on that 20-year horizon, and we have, as I mentioned in the staff report, about 3.2 million of remaining debt capacity that we have access to incurring that can be retired from the repayment of the tax increment, but that has to be incurred by the duration deadline. So this amendment simply extends that deadline, moves it out another 10 years, does not change the total amount of debt, doesn't increase the amount of debt, just increases the timeframe in which to incur that. And it's not uncommon for urban renewal agencies to have a duration in their original plan of 30 or 40 years. So we're not, we're really more of an outlier of having had a shorter duration timeframe. So we're, we're not really blazing a trail here anywhere. The paperwork is a little bit cumbersome just because of the statutory requirements and the, for the urban renewal chapter and the nature of this amendment. As I mentioned in the staff report, there's basically three different types. This is sort of the intermediate level of a council amendment that requires a council to adopt the changes by an ordinance. And then also, you'll end up seeing the same exact text again when you're wearing your urban renewal agency hats in June, when I bring you the urban renewal agency budget to adopt for the coming year. You'll also have a resolution that the agency would then adopt this same text to amend the plan. So it's, it's a little bit paperwork-heavy, but that's the, the nature of the process. So as I mentioned, it's a pretty straightforward and narrow change, simply changing what currently is specified as 20 years to 30 years. And, you know, making some other verbiage changes so that the terminology makes sense. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions? All right, any questions online, councilors? All right, I'm not seeing any. Okay. Well, this is-
This is also introduction.
This is an introduction. We're going to do a public hearing. And so I will open a public hearing on the question of an ordinance approving the Fourth Amendment to the Troutdale Riverfront Renewal Plan to Extend the Plan Duration from 20 years to 30 years. And I'll invite public comment. This is a public hearing. We'll vote on it at the next council meeting. So online, anyone wish to address staff or the council on the question before us? Seeing no one, how about out here in the chamber? Anybody care to address the staff or council on the question of this ordinance? Seeing none. There's been no public comment. I will close the public hearing. And unless there's other questions, we'll take it up at the next council meeting as the second reading and consideration of adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to agenda item number eight. This is also a public hearing and an ordinance introduction. An ordinance amending the Troutdale Municipal Code Title III, Revenue and Finance, Establishing Chapter 3.36, Police and Fire Services Fee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is also a ordinance introduction, so no action this evening. As I had also mentioned, this was something else that we talked about much more so at the Budget Committee meetings last month than the, the previous agenda item. This ordinance introduction, as well as the subsequent second reading, is the framework. It simply establishes the, the outline, the mechanism, the structure, and establishes the fee, the ability for the fee to exist. As we discussed during the Budget Committee meetings, the, the fee would, is necessary to address our significantly increased costs for public safety that were discussed at, at length. Council would presumably, following adoption, again, after second reading, the ordinance itself does not set the rate or the fee amount. It simply sets that the fee does exist, and then the council would then, by a separate resolution, set the fee amount or the rate. And that would come following the, the adoption. At this point in time, staff, based on what we had discussed in the Budget Committee meetings, we would bring a, a resolution that would propose the fee rate to be at $15 per month for the ERU-based calculation, as we had discussed during the budget meetings. The fee would become effective July 1st, the start of the new fiscal year. The ordinance text is, is, follows or is the attachment to the, to the, as the attachment A of the ordinance is, is outlined there. As I said, it's a framework, provides kind of the numerous mechanisms, outlines the purpose, establishes that July 1st is the date, specifies and restricts that the, the fee can only be used for the police and fire services and can't be used for other governmental purposes. It does provide the flexibility, potentially, for use of the fee for creation of either a police or a fire department startup cost, if that ends up being a avenue that potentially is pursued. But again, it can't be used for other general governmental purposes. Resolution established by, or the rate established by resolution calculated based on the quantity of the equivalent residential units, the single-family residents having one as the, the basis. It also doesn't exempt the city-owned properties, city-owned utility accounts from the fee. They pay the fee just like they pay for the water usage they currently make use of. Kind of the rest of the mechanisms, the billing and collection, delinquency, all follow in line with this same kind of terminology, procedure, and process that we use for water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater charges. Administration is, you know, in the finance director's lap, and then there's an appeals process. If somebody feels as though the appeal or the charge doesn't apply to them, there's appeals processes provided for, for that. And then ultimately, an appeal of the finance director's decision can go to the city manager. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions that the council may have on the proposed ordinance. And again, this is just introduction this evening.
Question. From the council. Go ahead.
I want to know what, why do we have to do this without knowing what the fee is going to be? We're just establishing, the council has the ability to do this?
The ordinance creates the fee, but it doesn't create an amount of the fee.
Okay.
The resolution then would be, be a separate action, and then it would say that the fee that now exists is set at whatever dollar amount that the council then so chooses. It's sort of the same structure that it is for the water, sewer, and stormwater utility rates.
So we couldn't, this would only apply for police and fire?
Correct. This is, this is strictly, yeah, just that.
Yeah, it's sort of, there was a few people at budget that were, were trying to double the amount that was proposed before we even, after things started, so that, that kind of concerned me a great deal.
Yeah, the, the, the rate amount is, is a council decision, and that'll be based on a separate resolution that I bring to you. Just like any resolution, the council can choose to make changes to it, but we would bring it with the $15 that was included in the manager's proposed budget and the assumptions in the budget that were based on that number.
Awesome, thanks, Eric.
You bet.
I have a question. Eric, I, I think I have forgotten, if you could remind me, if there is a hardship on family, do we have, are they able to fight for hardship against the speed?
We, we have a, a senior discount and a low-income discount programs that already exist, and this falls into that same utility umbrella.
Okay, thank you. I was reading this, I just couldn't remember. I thought we had discussed that, but, thank you.
Following up on that, does the fee, if there's a, you know, 50% reduction because of hardship, income, or senior, or whatever, does the fee itself get prorated similarly or, or not?
Well, the, the low, the low income and the senior fee is based on a relief on the utility costs, and it is based on charging 50% of the rate of the sewer, because that's a fixed amount, whereas people have the ability to decide how much they want to water their lawn or not water their lawn. And then the general fund then makes up that difference, whatever that reduction is that's provided to the, those two programs. It runs about $18,000 a year the last few years. The general fund then makes a contrib, not a contribution, makes a transfer to make the utilities whole so that the other ratepayers aren't impacted by that, that program, because it was a council governmental policy decision to provide the relief. Because it was a council governmental policy decision to provide the relief.
How about the police and fire services fee if there is one?
There's no specific discount program for water, stormwater, or police and fire fee. It's, the one program is intended to provide that relief, as it's currently written.
Reduction in the sewer rate. Yeah, okay, understood. And I think the public, I mean, it was publicly discussed at the budget that the fee that was, well, was in the budget as adopted, the fee was going to be, it's not, we haven't established it for sure. But the fee that was being seriously discussed was $15 a month.
Correct.
And everyone in Troutdale should recognize that this means that's a fee that will appear on the utility bill that we all receive for sewer and water. There's going to be an extra $15 a month. This is not something we are delighted to have to do. But we are faced with huge increases in the cost of police and fire services. And a lot of cities, most cities in the area, certainly neighboring cities, charge such a fee. And we, at Budget Committee, which includes the council, are reluctantly saying, yeah, well, in order to keep the city safe with police and fire services, this is a price we're going to ask the citizens to pay. This ordinance establishes the authority to collect the fee. It doesn't actually establish the fee. But members of the public who are, have objection should be aware this is coming down the road pretty fast. It'll be in the July bill, starting in the July bill if we adopt this ordinance. So, and that's $15 a month. It's, I think it's important for the safety and livability of Troutdale that we do this, but it isn't easy. And none of us is happy about it. None of us is happy about it. But it's something we're going to have to do. The, at least we think, to keep ourselves solvent. Anyway, anybody else on the council? I am going to open a public hearing. Anybody online? All right, we'll have a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the introduction of an ordinance. This is the first reading. And it's establishing a police and fire services fee to be collected on our utility bills. So open the public hearing. Anybody online wish to address the council?
Mayor Redmond, Paul Cox, Troutdale?
Yes, Paul.
Okay, I have one question. I think it would be on page two. At the top, it's 3.36.040. And under that, after number, letter D, which I'll read in full, so it's only four lines. "The fees collected by virtue of this chapter may be used for the acquisition, construction, operation, maintenance, and repair, including renewal, replacement, and improvement, and for the future establishment of either or both police department or fire and medical, emergency medical department or operation." My understanding is this public safety utility fee is to cover ongoing expenses resulting from the increased cost of fire and police. When you say for the future establishment of, that sounds like you're using it as a piggyback, setting aside money for future. When you, I mean, how can you have, how can you be, how can you be setting aside future money when you need it all to cover the increased police and fire expenses? That's my basic question. Thank you.
Eric, do you have a comment?
The way that's intended to be written is that is to provide that flexibility. It's not expected to be a piggybank. It's not expected that we're going to have excess revenue. It's intended to cover the possibility of startup costs for a police or fire department. But it's collected, includes the construction, operation, and so forth. So it is going to be spent for what is, in the first year, of course, existing IGAs with other governmental entities that provide us contracted law enforcement or contracted fire and emergency medical services. But as part of the ongoing discussion that PSWAG, as well as the Budget Committee and council have had, looking at establishing one or both of those departments are within the options that council wanted to further investigate. So all this is doing is trying to intend that that is a possibility.
All right, any other questions on Zoom or comments? The, how about in the room? This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on the establishment of the ability to collect a police and fire services fee? All right, I will close the public hearing. And anything further from council?
I would just offer, Mr. Mayor, that of course misery loves company. I would report that your neighboring council and Budget Committee struggled with much of these same issues last evening. And the City of Fairview Budget Committee approved a budget that includes a $15 a month public safety fee is what they're calling it, but police and fire services fee. And they also included in their approved budget an additional $5 a month parks fee. So we are certainly not alone in struggling with the costs to cover public safety.
All right, that is interesting to know that. Anyway, with that, I think we'll take up adoption of this ordinance at the next council meeting.
Correct.
Thank you, Eric.
Two weeks.
And let's move on to agenda item number nine, staff communication.
Well, thank you, Mayor. First of all, the staff who will be getting the first issue will be Mr. Mueller. So I will encourage him to stay where he's at to give you the first staff communication.
I asked Ray if I could horn in on this item for, to give you a 30-second update from Jensen Strategies on the recruitment process. And I've been in touch with him as the time, as we've been going through the process. And he got me an update last evening. And that, as he says, "Interest in the position remains high. We are up to 21 applications and counting."
Wow.
I know there are others coming in from people that I've talked with about the position. And again, this response is unprecedented since the start of the pandemic. We are halfway through. And normally, the vast majority of applications come in during the latter half of the advertisement period. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to share that with council. There's a great deal of interest, which is a far better position than we're begging people to apply. So in talking with him, this was just an email exchange. I spoke with him last week. Some of the applicants, he characterizes as federal refugees, folks that maybe are leaving roles from the federal government that have governmental experience, may not quite have as applicable. But, you know, by no means is that the majority of the applicants. So I just wanted to have a chance to give you that brief update. The application period closes the day before the next council meeting. So on the holiday is when it closes. With that, I will turn it back to the boss for the rest of the agenda item.
Thank you, Eric. Number one, tomorrow night is a planning commission meeting. There are several items on the docket. And as usual, feel free to zoom in or attend in person, but try to keep any comments to a minimum as any issue out of the planning commission may come to you at some later date. Number two, on May 29th at 1:30, the TCAB has scheduled their interview with Ethos/Natos, a development bid for the Urban Renewal Agency. So if you're interested, it's at 1:30 on May 29th. If you want to watch it or attend, it's going to be in this room. Correct, Eric? Yeah, it'll be here. And I understand we will have a lot of coming from out of town, actually, to present. I understand Time Equities will be here in person also. So it should be a good presentation. Number three, next Tuesday, we are having a work session meeting to select new committee members, beginning on July 1st for all the city committees. And we are thrilled that we've got 27 applications. So we have a good pool of people to draw from. And we won't have to be forcing people to serve on two or three committees to be able to fill our quota. So it'll be good next week. We are scheduling them starting at 6 o'clock. And we will have dinner next Tuesday here. We will have dinner. I think we decided we're going to go burrito shop tacos next. Yeah, they're good. So anyway, that's next Tuesday night. And then finally, please check your champions, if anybody's interested in what more spring cleanup events we have going on. We have several more going this month. Great opportunities if you're interested. That's on there. So that's all we have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to council communications, starting with you, Jesse.
Nothing for me.
All right, John?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, Zach, council communications?
You know what, I'm looking forward to next week. I definitely told quite a few people to try their hand at applying since I think that kind of makes the backbone of what we really get done as a city. Having served on some committees and just seeing the people that were on the committees with me and many of who are on council now. I mean, it goes a long way to be involved. So I just want to, I guess, throw that out there and say I'm glad to see that there's a lot of good applicants in there. So I appreciate the staff as always, and yeah.
Carol?
Well, I'm excited that we have that many applications for committees. Because I remember when it was so thin. And I served on what, five, I think, just because there was nobody applying. So I'm excited that we have a pool to choose from. The TCAB at 1:30, is that in Zoom?
Yes, I'll have Zoom availability.
Was that at 1:30? Is that what?
Yes, 1:30 on May 29th.
May 29th.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and as usual, I appreciate everybody being here. I enjoyed the chair from the chief being here. That's, it's always great to hear her and everybody involved. So thank you. It was good, good meeting.
I don't, I don't have anything, but thank you.
All right. I, we had a news conference yesterday with the mayors of the four cities and County Commissioner Vince Jones and a lot of cameras. I saw a bit of it on TV. I don't know if anyone else did. But the subject was stressing the importance to the state legislature of funding roads, the state funding of our roads. We, my pitch was as gateway to the gorge and as gateway from the east to the Portland area. We have lots of visitors. Good roads are absolutely essential to our economy. I won't rattle off the whole thing. But anyway, it was, each city has had its pitch. And I think it was generally, and then there was a series of questions. I really hadn't done a news conference quite like that. And it was good. Let's hope the legislature's listening. And tell all your friends in the legislature to support. Apparently, there's legislation coming up this month for, to support ODAD and roads throughout the state. And we all know they could use some help. That's all I have. My turn? Yes, Dylan, I'm sorry. I looked at you and I didn't say your name. So I'm like...
I kind of hinted on it at Budget when we bought the parking deals for Glanville Park. I'm concerned that it hasn't come across council's desk. Because unless I'm wrong, I don't think the Parks Advisory Committee has the authority to make that decision. I think there are going to be some upset community members. And I want to at least be aware of what's going on. So is that coming?
Yes, it'll be on the end of May or the 1st of June meeting. That's the schedule. And it will include that citizens of Troutdale don't have to pay. So they won't be upset at all.
I didn't know that. Thank you. And then Sunday was Mother's Day. And I just wanted to thank all the hard-working mothers out there who do the, sometimes I think this job.
Good move.
And with that, I move to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.